I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. I'll start with a roll call.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
So we do have two members that are not going to be here tonight as well. We don't have our secretary, so when you do speak, we're going to ask that you sign in for us this evening. Please print and then speak clearly and use the microphone if you're speaking for us because we really need to make sure we capture what's said for the minutes. So with that, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any John Jay students here? Or Arlington? Yes, okay, no problem. We usually go about around 8:00 when there's a bit of a break there and then we'll have, we'll sign your certificate, okay? All right, so we do have, our next two meetings coming up are going to be Tuesday, October 24th, and Tuesday, November 28th, which is the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. We have one set of minutes to approve the August 22nd with a couple amendments. I know I made some and Aziz made some, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 22nd as amended?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to start tonight's meeting with a couple decisions. We actually have one decision that's on hold, the number, item number one, Stephen DiPaolo, because the zoning board and the planning board has made a request to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for their reconsideration of this, of their review of that project. So there's not going to be any action taken on item number one. We do have an agreement from the applicant that they'll hold our decision until we've heard from DEC. But so we're going to start with three decisions and then we will open it up for the next couple of items for public hearings. That's an opportunity for us to hear from neighbors of the applicants where the zoning board has already had the opportunity to do an initial review of those applications. And then finally, after the public hearings, the last part of our meeting is reviews, which is generally the first time we've seen some of these, most of these applications. And so it gives the zoning board an opportunity to work through some of the issues that we might find in those applications. So if you're on for review, you'll be at the end, but it will give us a real chance to work through what you're looking for and so that hopefully your public hearing will go a lot smoother. So with that being said, as I just mentioned, there's no, going to be no action on item number one. So item number two is a decision. Appeal 3830 Benedict, Christopher and Maureen Benedict, 67 Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a special permit for an accessory professional office in order to have a yoga studio in their detached barn pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. All right, I'm going to offer this decision. Okay, whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June 14, 2017, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held public hearings on June 27th, July 25th, and August 27th, August 22nd, 2017, and the applicant seek to utilize up to one half of the barn structure to create a small yoga studio. The applicant, Maureen, is a teacher of yoga instructors. As described, the applicant would hold classes and immersion programs to train attendees how to teach and lead yoga classes. At any given time, up to 12 persons may be participating. These would be programs during the week and on a few weekends where, when an immersion course would be given. The alter, the alterations to be made to the site would be to convert the barn to comply with the New York State Building Code, add a bathroom, as well as create a parking area for up to 10 cars, and install outside lighting. The board held a public hearing which commenced on June 27th, which was adjourned several times and closed on August 22nd. Most of the public comments centered on traffic and the preference to not include a new entrance from Grove Court as originally proposed by the applicants. The applicants modified the proposal to utilize the existing driveway off of Fishkill Hook Road. There were some concerns over the business in the neighborhood. The board explored in detail with the applicants their question as to whether or not section 194-90 envisioned the use in and out structure and the impact of the creation of a parking area in the community. Following the closure of the hearing, the zoning board has deliberated in considering the facts presented. The board first considered section 194-90 and its requirements. This permit allows for professional offices, no more than two employees, and no external evidence of the use except for a sign. In addition, the board reviewed section 194-90B wherein the law limits changes to the front facade as well as the character of the community, et cetera. While there's no definition for accessory professional office in the definition section, home occupation is defined as "any use customarily conducted entirely within a dwelling and carried on by the inhabitants thereof, which use is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling purposes and does not change the character thereof. The conducting of a clinic, hospital, mortuary, or any similar use shall not be deemed to be a home occupation." In applying the law to the facts presented to the board, presented, the board has reached the conclusion that the proposed use does not meet the parameters required by section 194-90. In the board's review, the following determinations support their view. One, a reading of zoning code section 194-90 in its totality would limit professional offices to within the footprint of the house or principal dwelling as it exists or is expanded. Two, the creation of a parking area for eight to 10 cars and ancillary lighting would clearly visual, would clearly create visual relationships between this property and the adjoining neighborhood. Three, in reviewing the definition of home occupations, it is clear that the legislative intent to allow home occupations did not envision groups of eight to 10, eight to 12 people to be regularly accessing the property in a residential neighborhood. And four, the limitation in section 194-90A implies that this provision only pertains to uses that have a small number of people participating. Therefore, it is ordered that this application is denied. In denying the application, no secret determined must be made. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number three, appeal 3831 Brooks. Mark Olson representing Arthur Brooks, 10 Leonard Place, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a nine-foot sideline variance for an existing air conditioner condenser pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Again, I will offer this decision. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June 14, 2017, and the board held public hearings on June 27th, June, July 25th, and August 22nd, 2017, and a neighbor spoke in opposition citing noise concerns at the August 22, 2017 continuation of the public hearing, the applicant consultant submitted testimony showing noise levels to be within the town's noise ordinance. The equipment was installed in its location due to the unique features of the house layout and location. The board in reviewing the property during its proceedings also discovered certain violations exist on the property in the form of a foundation that was built under a new, under a now expired permit. The board grants the application for a nine-foot side yard variance for air conditioning equipment upon the following conditions to be complied with within 60 days. One, noise abatement screening subject to the approval of the town engineer. Two, obtaining a building permit or other acceptable resolution for the existing foundation on the property. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And item number three, appeal 3831 Brooks. Nope, sorry, we just did that one. Item number four, appeal 3832 East Fishkill Solar LLC, Cuddy &amp; Fayer, LLP, representing East Fishkill Solar LLC, are requesting a use variance for a proposed community solar facility to be located at 28 Helen Road Rear, Hopewell Junction, which is in an R1 zoning district, as well as a three-foot variance for the proposed seven-foot fence pursuant to sections 194-16 and 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Property is in the ownership of Frank, Paul, and Eileen Doherty. Okay, we're going to start this one with the acceptance of a neg, negative declaration. Was this circulated, Pam? Do members have a neg?
No.
Okay. Then very quickly, let me just go through this. We all know the description of the action is to get, grant a use variance and to grant the variance for the, for the seven-foot fence. It is an unlisted action. This neg deck was prepared by the town planner. We, the following documentation was analyzed in making the negative declaration. We had a long form EAF and a supplemental part two. So the environmental issues identified as relevant were land use and zoning, stormwater, quantity control and pollution prevention, traffic and circulation, natural resources, visual and aesthetics, and other. And there are appropriate explanations related to both, to all of those. So do I have a motion to accept the neg deck?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then a decision for East Fishkill Solar LLC. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on August 9, 2017, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on August 22, 2017, and the applicant's parcel is approximately 28 acres and the proposal is to utilize approximately 14 acres to install a solar array adjacent to Helen Road. The parcel is owned R1 single-family residential and the proposed activity is not a permitted use. Pursuant to town law section 267, the applicant is contract vendee, seeks a use variance to permit the use of this parcel for the project. The public hearing in this matter was opened on August 22, 2017 and closed on the same date. The hearing was duly advertised and the property posted. In support of their application, the applicant submitted a property appraisal by McGrath Associates, a competent and licensed New York State property appraiser dated April 24, 2017. The appraiser analyzed the property as a residential parcel and found it to have little or no The parcel has no frontage on a town road and is accessed by a narrow right-of-way. It is surrounded by creek, wetland, and major utility substation on three sides. In reviewing the record before it, the board determines that as currently zoned, the property cannot yield a reasonable return. The unique characteristics of the property's location and terrain create a hardship that prevents the use as zoned, and the evidence clearly shows that the proposed use will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The proposed offered comments during the public hearings related to visual and audio concerns, these concerns can be addressed with reasonable conditions. The board also determines that if a use variance is granted, that certain conditions on the site's use and the form of land use controls should be imposed since no planning board review will be had. At the August 22, 2017 meeting, the applicant incurred and consented to this approach. Now therefore, the board finds as follows. One, that the property as currently zoned does not allow a reasonable return. Two, the unique characteristics of the property's location and terrain create a hardship for its use for residential purposes. Three, the proposed use will not alter the character of the community in that a utility substation already adjoins the parcel. Four, the hardship is not self-created as the proposed solar facility was recently enabled by the Public Service Commission and as such note is not, not contemplated in the zoning code. Therefore, ordered that the application for a use variance to utilize up to nine point, I think it's 14 acres, right?
Yeah.
That's what we say up front. So to utilize up to 14 acres of the parcel for a solar panel array as well as a three-foot height variance for the fence as required by the National Electric Code is granted subject to the following conditions. One, compliance with all other regulations such as the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the Public Service Commission, and the SWIP. Two, the complex will be constructed as shown on a sketch dated November 28, 2016 and last revised August 8, 2017 by Mazer Consulting and filed herein. Any changes to this last revision must be reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Three, that the site will be screened by a 10-foot black vinyl clad fence. The board grants a three-foot variance to allow this fence height. Four, the access road will not be paved. Five, all lights will be full cutoff and shielded to prevent any light spillage beyond the property boundaries. Six, the applicant will work with the abutting property owner to the right-of-way to plant a row of evergreens or other acceptable plantings to the abutter, on the abutter's property. Seven, other than during construction, the site access will be limited to inspections and repairs and no storage or office use is permitted. Eight, no other, such other reasonable land use controls as the town engineer may request. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Is there one correction to this? It's not a 10-foot fence, right? It's a seven-foot fence?
No, it's 10-foot fence. It's a four-foot variance.
No, I think it's a seven.
I think it's a seven-foot fence. That's a three-foot variance from this four-foot requirement.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that last condition-
The 10, what was that?
The 10 is a seven.
We were happy with the fence height you guys wanted.
That's fine. So it's going to be, it's going to be a, condition number three is going to be a seven-foot black vinyl clad fence.
And somehow in the multiple drafts, there was a number nine that upon decommissioning for, to ensure decommissioning and removal, that the applicant would either provide a plan as approved by the Public Service Commission or post the bond in amount acceptable by the town board to ensure it will be removed at the end of its use.
Okay, so with that amendment, I offer the decision. Is there a second?
Second, as amended.
Okay, so votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so Tommy, you're going to give Pam the language for the rest of that.
It's a new draft.
And then Pam needs this one because I, where I changed two words on that one. She needs that.
That's one national first motion.
Okay. So we are now to the public hearing section of our meeting. So we are on item number five, appeal 3844 Lemke, Guido Lemke, 207 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a one-foot sideline variance for a proposed 18-foot by three-foot deck expansion pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we had an opportunity last month-
Motion to a public hearing.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's going to be another one of those nights. Okay, we, last month, we had the opportunity to review your application. You put together one of the most professionally put-together applications we, this board has seen, at least in my tenure, you know, here. So we do certainly compliment you on that. And essentially, you're, we are looking to add a deck around the front of the house that really is going to improve the look of it, okay?
That's what we think.
Yes, and it's, it's just going to, it's, it's not a major deck where you're going to put tables or anything like that. You're really just looking for a nice pleasant seating area to be able to enjoy the pleasantries of the evening or whatever it is, so. But like I said, the diagrams that you gave us, the, you know, description and everything really made it clear that it was an, it really is an improvement to your, the physical and aesthetic look of your house and should be a real improvement to the street.
Well, thank you.
So with that being said, are there any questions or comments from board members?
No, I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Guido Lemke, 207 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a one-foot sideline variance for a proposed 18-foot by three-foot deck expansion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
So this is- All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a one-foot sideline variance for a proposed 18-foot by three-foot deck expansion pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means and the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance.
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Now you'll deal with the building department.
Sorry, I don't understand the process. About your decision, can I clarify?
No, the public hearing's already been held. This is, we're on a totally different matter.
So what should I do if I need to clarify something for this decision?
The public hearing's already been closed. We, we did hear you multiple times, so.
No, I only speak one time.
Just once.
Multiple times on that one evening. Yeah, sorry, Mr. Lemke, you're, you're finished.
So.
If you, you're welcome to write to the board to take appropriate action as you see fit.
Can you write to my house to tell me what's, what's your decision to clarify something?
It's public record, so you, you can get a copy from the zoning-
From the clerk.
So if I, if I to, I can actify or argue anything about your decision?
No, again, there's a procedure. What I would suggest is, once, I think it's going to take about a week, two weeks to-
Five days.
Five days, basically. After five days, next week, go to the town zoning office, make, get a copy and then make a decision after, I mean, then review it and then figure out what you need to do.
Okay, so my, my, I want them to move this-
Okay, we're not going to deal with this tonight. Our decision's already made, so if you wish to challenge that-
What's your decision? Just-
You have to read it.
Grant to the variance.
I have to read it, okay?
Yes, yes.
Where should I get this report?
From the corner office in five, within five days, right?
Can I get it now?
Next week.
No, it's not. It'll be ready within five days. It has to be five.
Five days?
Yes.
Five business days. Five business days.
Five business days, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, appeal 3845 Consigliato, Vincenzo Consigliato, 161 Milltown Road Homes, is requesting a 1,503 square foot variance for a proposed 2,400 square foot garage pursuant to section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hello.
All right, good evening. So we did have an opportunity to review your request. Your original implication was a pole barn. We all agree that you're really looking to store motor vehicles within that, so it is properly defined as a garage, but the structure itself appears, has the appearance or is, really is a pole barn structure. You have a large lot. You're proposing to put this in the rear of your property. The reason that you're here is that the size of this garage far exceeds what the code allows, which would be 60% of the footprint of your building, of your existing home, or 750 square feet. And so with the size that you're proposing, the 2,400 square foot garage, you are far exceeding what's allowed by code. And so we did have some discussion about why you needed that, that size. You talked about, you know, wanting to get an RV, that you had multiple, you know, vehicles that you store in other places right now, and so you're incurring expenses related to garaging other, your, I think you said a couple antique vehicles?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're looking to bring them on to your own property. You told us that really the visual impact to your neighbors is going to be extremely minimal, so that there's-
If any.
Huh?
If, if any.
If any, exactly. So I can't say that in the winter, they won't see anything. That's the, so, so we did have a discussion about it. We didn't exactly get a layout of how you proposed to use that, and I don't honestly remember how many bays you talked about putting. How many garage doors?
Just one.
Just one?
Do you have a picture of it? I thought I left a few-
Yeah, I think we-
Pictures of it. Just one garage where I could just pull in and not have to move-
Oh, yeah, we had that.
Three, four cars to get one car out if I'm going anywhere with it. Or my truck and my trailer.
Okay. That was, that was just to figure out the square footage of the house. That's what that was. So, all right, so you're just proposing the one garage door itself?
Yeah, and some windows.
Okay, how tall is the garage door going to be?
It is 14 feet because I need that to back in an RV.
So how tall is the garage itself going to be?
14 feet. The RV is going to be under that. 14-foot garage door.
Right, how tall is the structure going to be?
Oh, 16-foot is the ceiling.
Okay.
The inside of the ceiling. I, it should be right there.
It's the dimensions.
It's from grade, it is-
12 inch for overhangs.
16, four, plus a 412 pitch. Probably 23 feet or 21 feet with the 34 pitch on top of that, totally.
Am I missing it? I'm not seeing-
Do you have a picture of this?
Yeah, we do. And I'm not seeing a height on here.
No.
Yes, it's here. Well, to here.
16 foot.
Oh, there it is, okay.
16 foot.
Okay, and so, so if we're talking about a garage structure that's going to be 16 feet and that's before the roof line, that's just to the eaves, we don't need any other variance for this, right?
I think we're limited to 20-some feet for total.
Total. Okay, just, just making sure because we do have another, you know, we did have another issue related to it.
Yeah, to the peak, it's 25 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's less than that.
Okay, thank you. Just, just wanted to be sure because I know we had a lot of discussion and I just didn't remember all of the details of it, so. Okay, so, again, because of the number of vehicles that you're now storing in other places, this was your concern. We talked about where you were locating it. It's about 300 feet to the rear of your property line, 100 feet to your closest neighbor property line?
Yeah, it's probably more than 300 feet. I can't walk it.
Yeah, you, you put 300 feet plus, but-
Yeah. And over 100 to the side and probably 200 to the other side.
Okay. So is there any comments or questions from board members?
No, I'm good.
I'm fine.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Vincenzo Consigliato, 161 Milltown Road Homes, requesting a 1,503 square foot variance for a proposed 2,400 square foot garage? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is appeal number 3845. Applicant is requesting a 15, oh, three, 1,503 square foot variance for a proposed 2,400 square foot garage for the storage of motor vehicles pursuant to section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Essen, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the applicant's property is over 11 acres in size and the proposed garage will be over 300 feet from the rear property line, over 100 feet from one sideline, and over 200 feet from the other. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant's, applicant owns antique vehicles, quads, and plows. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries.
Okay.
Now deal with the building department.
Okay, there's-
Okay.
It's Consigliato, it's Consigliato.
The address is correct, so, okay. Thank you.
Just make sure that Pam gets it so that the order has it corrected.
All right, item number seven, Appeal 3846, Belucci. Christine Belucci, 2792 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 49-foot front line variance for an existing 50-foot by 9-foot side overhang and a 15-foot side variance for the pre-existing house pursuant to Section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good evening.
Hello.
All right, so we had the opportunity to review this last month, and one of the things that is unique kind of to your house is the fact that you are on Route 52, which is a state road, and aft, well after your house was built, the town code changed that now requires a 100-foot setback instead of the usual 50-foot setback. And so your existing house does not even meet code based on that, but it's not based on anything that you did at all. So, and again, similar to the, one of the last applications, we saw what you're, what you've actually now done, the overhang, kind of gives balance to your house. It actually makes it look much, much nicer. So, the, it's kind of like a covered porch, but it's not necessarily a porch underneath it, which is why we had some discussion about what was the appropriate thing to call it.
Exactly.
So, you know, so, but again, you gave us a complete application. You gave us nice visuals about what it was going to look like, so at this point, we just want to make sure none of your neighbors have a strong objection to it.
But I know, in fact, I have a letter from one of them, if you'd like...
Oh, that would be great. I'll enter that into the record. Okay, nope. That's fine, no problem. So let me read this into the record. Oh, no, this is not her letter. This is my letter. This is, this is the letter giving notice to your neighbor.
I know, sorry. Long day.
I'm like, wait a second, that's, that's my name on there. No, that's okay. That's fine. Thank you. All right, dated September 24, 2017, to whom it may concern, we have received and read the notice concerning Appeal 3846, Belucci. Since his house has existed from the early 1950s, well before the existing of the zone, existence of the zoning laws in its present location, we have no objection to its location. Our family has also lived here since 1947 before the present zoning laws. Our property adjoins the present owner, Belucci, on the west side. As far as the front line variance goes, the present house already exists within the 49-foot front line dimension. I believe the overhang just matches the present existing house. We have no objections and believe this planned new porch adds a nice look to the existing house. If additional on this matter please advise. Thank you. From Robert Rumpf. So we'll enter that into the record. Okay? So are there any questions or comments from board members?
No.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from Belucci, 2792 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 49-foot front line variance for an existing 50-foot by 9-foot side overhang and a 15-foot sideline variance for the pre-existing house? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So this is a 49-foot front line variance for an existing 50-foot by 9-foot side overhang and a 15-foot sideline variance for the pre-existing house pursuant to Section 194-94 and Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variances and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the lot is over 14 acres in total and the house is located 51 feet from the edge of Route 52, a state road, thus the requirement for the increased setback. The house has been there for 68 years and the overhang actually improves the aesthetics, the aesthetic appearance of the house. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the house is pre-existing, non-conforming, and the addition of the overhang will enhance the house. The variance requested is not substantial and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby agree, hereby approves the above stated variance.
Second.
We're missing the line in here about the, being filed within five days by the clerk. So with that amendment, do you make your motion?
Motion as amended.
As amended.
Okay. So Aziz, seconded. Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Okay. All right, now just close out everything with the building department.
Okay. All right, will do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, item number eight. Appeal 3847, Smilkskeen, Michael Smilkskeen and Veronica Herrera, 26 Clover Branch Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 30-foot by 24-foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good. I do have to comment. I don't believe your sign was up the entire time, and so just as a reminder for everybody, when you are assigned for a public hearing and you purchase a sign, you do have an obligation that that sign has to be up for, you know, the 25 days or 20 days, whatever the requirement is.
I had it in the back of the site maybe at first, and I, the next day I put it in the front. I didn't realize it has to be...
Yeah, it has to be where you're...
It's right by my mailbox, though.
I did see it yesterday, so that's why I'm commenting that I definitely saw it yesterday, and all of a sudden it was like, oh, there's the sign, so, but I don't remember seeing it before that, and I actually didn't remember seeing it today, but you might have taken it down since the public was, hearing was this evening. So, again, for everybody, just please make sure if you're assigned to a public hearing that the sign is, is visible in the front of your property. That's all. Okay, so we did have an opportunity to review this application. You actually cleared the area already where you're proposing to put a garage. You're on a very, very busy street, Clover Branch Road, which is, you know, a direct connection between Route 376 and Hillside Lake Road to Route 82 and even further on to the Deconic Parkway. What you're proposing is, at the bottom of your driveway, adjacent to your existing house, you're proposing to put a two-bay garage, which is very consistent with what your neighbors have. Your two neighbors immediately to your right have, in fact, the same type of structure. I don't know if it was one bay or two bay, by the way, each, and then to your left, the neighbor didn't have a garage, but they had a shed, so...
Correct.
But in driving by, you actually have to really make it a point to go looking for it, because there's just so much screening on that street. It's not even really going to be visible for anybody driving by unless they really go looking for it. So, it, in my mind, it definitely fits within the character of the neighborhood, and it, I don't believe it's...
And I'd like to add that it, that garage is going to match my house as far as siding and roofing, so it's aesthetically, it should look really nice.
And you're not clearing out any of the trees on that side with your neighbor or anything like that.
No, no, that doesn't have to be done.
So all the existing vegetation's going to stay there. Okay. So any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Okay, so, any, is there anyone here for, or who wishes to speak for or against the request from Michael Smilkskeen and Veronica Herrera, 26 Clover Branch Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 30-foot by 24-foot detached garage? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Can I just say one thing? It's 24 feet wide, 30 inches length.
30 feet.
30 feet.
Um, yeah, 30 feet, yeah.
It's still 30 by 24, it's fine.
Okay, okay, yeah.
We've got the dimensions, whether we have them in the right order.
I got you, okay.
Not a problem.
Mm-hmm.
This is Appeal number 3847. Applicant is requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 24-feet by 30-feet detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and find, finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as several of their neighbors have similarly sized, have similarly sized and placed garages, and there's significant vegetation screening in this area and makes this garage only minimally visible to the neighbors and Clover Branch Road. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as access to the garage needs to be from the driveway and there's no room on the side yard without a larger variance. The requested, the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance and standard...
Within five days...
Within five days.
The resolution will be filed with the clerk.
True.
And...
As amended.
And sent to the applicant. That's what the last piece is. Okay, so as amended.
Second.
Second, seconded by Tara. So votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Now you'll deal with the building department to get your building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just, just come into any time this week and...
Yeah, when they're, during their hours. They have slightly different hours.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, have a good evening. All right, item number nine, Appeal 3848, Ali, Arafat Ali, 40 West Old Farm Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 6-foot height variance for an existing 16-foot high shed pursuant to Section 194-107b2 of the zoning ordinance. Is Mr. Ali here?
Second.
Um, well, can we still do the public hearing even if he's not here? I don't see why we can't, because we advertised it, yeah.
There's no...
Okay, motion to, I mean...
So do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so we did have an opportunity to review Mr. Ali's application. This is a shed that existed on the property when Mr. Ali bought the property, so it was not a condition that he created. It is, the building department has gone out and inspected it, has made sure the rest of the site is clear and in compliance, so it's, you know, and the shed itself was well kept. There was no physical reason for it to be taken down.
Picked up on CO inspection.
Okay, good. All right, great. So, so really, he, it was not a condition that he created. So is there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
That there's anyone here to answer the questions? So is, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Arafat Ali, 40 West Old Farm Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 6-foot height variance for an existing 16-foot high shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this is a 6-foot height variance for an existing 16-foot high shed pursuant to Section 194-107b2, the zoning ordinance. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the shed was built by the previous owner and has been there for years. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance and be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the owner-applicant.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the motion carries. Thank you for pulling out that language. Okay, item number 10, Appeal 3849, Ralph, Arthur and Rosemary Ralph, 8 Old Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting an 11-foot rear line variance for a proposed 12-foot by 16-foot deck and a 31-foot sideline variance into the I-84 buffer for an existing 12-foot by 12-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-17 and Note Number 11 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we did have an opportunity to review with you last month your application. This board is well aware of your lot. It is an undersized lot that this board gave special consideration to the people who bought the lot, the developer, for their even buying or putting a house on there. We had a thorough discussion with them about the size of the house and where it would be located and the fact that pretty much anything you wanted to do on that property was going to require some kind of a variance, because this is like a house that is, is surrounded by roads.
We were never told that.
Understood, and, you know, so...
I mean, it's all the bill of goods.
You have, literally, you have I-84 on one side, you have Fishkill Hook Road on one side, and then Old Fishkill Hook Road. Yes, just, that just kind of wraps around, but, but the, the thing is, your site from Fishkill Hook Road, it does go down, so you really have a little bit of a buffer where, where the Fishkill Hook Road itself is building up to become the overpass over I-84. So it does give you something of some privacy for your backyard there. So we understand that after the developers got permission from us to build on this undersized lot, you went ahead, you bought the property, and you did a couple improvements to it. Unbeknownst to you that you were so restricted because of the very, the four front yards, in essence, that you have on that lot. So, working with you and with the town, we worked, you know, we kind of looked through the things that you requested at this point that are really imminent, that we need to address. You really, in our opinion, there's nothing you can do without needing a variance on that lot, so... So given that the requests that you're making really are minimal, you're not asking for an extremely large shed, you're not asking for a large deck, you're, it's really minimal in size, you know, the board said, okay, let's just hear from your neighbors and let's set this for a public hearing. So is there anything else you want to offer?
No, it's just, you know, we, we got into it, and once I started doing, I came, I got all the...
The specs.
The specs on where it was going to be, then it was 100-foot...
101.
Beautification act, which I was never, I was never told.
Right, for I-84.
That's what really messed me up.
Well, it, it does give you some protection, honestly, from the noise and everything else from I-84. There's a reason there's that buffer there.
If you go down to 84, you can't even see the house, even with the leaves down.
Understood. What? If they had built it any closer, more trees would come down, and you would have, you know, the potential there would have been more, which is why, you know, the town code does require that 100-foot. But again, we do understand that pretty much anything you're going to want to do with that house is going to require a variance.
That's it.
That's the discussion that we had. No swimming pool, no...
A jacuzzi.
Could we do a jacuzzi if we wanted to?
That's not the request that's before this.
No, 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 no.
Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Okay. For the record, I mean, when this applicant or this particular parcel came before the board, I did a site, site visit several times, and when this appeal came before the board, I did do a site visit, and as the chair has pointed out, this particular parcel is surrounded on all four sides by frontage, by roads. So on one side is Fishkill Hook Road, on two side is Old Fishkill Hook Road, and on the fourth side it is I-84. And it's a, 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 a unique parcel by itself. It's undersized, and it was basically, it became undersized because when I-84 was being constructed, they needed a, a little bit of land, and so I guess somehow this particular portion of this parcel became part of I-84. So we had a very, you know, lively conversation, discussion with the previous person who had brought this, or who, previous owner of the property to, to, to be able to grant the variance, and we wanted to make sure that this particular parcel, because of all these limitations, you know, we would not be entertaining any variance. But as the chair has pointed out, what you're proposing is kind of reasonable, because Fishkill Hook Road, it drops off, is a cliff, so that nobody from Fishkill Hook Road can really see it. From Old Fishkill Hook Road, there's a development going on kind of across from you.
Yeah, sax and wood, which is...
But the shed is facing, yeah, the shed is facing I-84, so it doesn't really have an impact on the community or the neighborhood. You're one, right by 84 and Old Fishkill Hook Road, and there's a cul-de-sac, so there's not, nobody's going to construct anything. a cul-de-sac, so there's not, nobody's going to construct anything. So, for all of these reasons, I just want to make it part of the record that this is a unique situation. But again, as Chair has pointed out, that if you're planning to do anything else, what I would suggest is that you come, go to the.
Up to the town first.
Maybe sell the house.
No, have you seen the shed physically? It matches the house perfectly. It has a tin roof.
I think it.
We're putting sliding doors on it, so it looks like, you know, the barns that are in the area. But like I said, everything was unbeknownst to us. They sold us the bill of goods.
We understand that.
I know John said, oh, you're going to need for a deck. That we figured. But with the shed, we went, you know, to the building department, yeah, 12 by 12, this, this, and this, and we did it.
Right. We understand.
But it's not an eyesore, it's gorgeous.
Yeah, no, no, as a matter of fact.
Him, when he does something, forget it.
No, as a matter of fact, for the record, I did see the shed and it is one of the better quality sheds.
It's all hand-built, really.
Yeah, it is, it's like a beautiful architecture, beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Everything is, it's like, it's well put together. I mean, it looks aesthetically pretty, beautiful, et cetera. So, but again, because it's an undersized lot, it did come through a request for a variance. We had all these conversations, and I just want to summarize it for the record, so.
Okay, so we know. And everybody compliments when they go by.
I might be living in this shade.
All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Arthur and Rosemary Ralph, 8 Old Fishkill Hook Road, Hopeful Junction, requesting an 11-foot rear line variance for a proposed 12-foot by 16-foot deck and a 31-foot sideline variance into the I-84 buffer for an existing 12-foot by 12-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This is Appeal Number 3849. The applicant is requesting 11-foot rear line variance for a proposed 12-feet by 16-foot deck and a 31-feet sideline variance for, to the I-84 buffer for the existing 12-feet by 12-feet shed pursuant to Section 194-17 and Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variances, and whereas the board moves to adopt these, their standard decision and order and finds that, and that whereas the zoning board of appeal finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community and the lot is significantly downgrade from Fishkill Hook Road and has significant vegetative screening from I-84, making these improvements minimally visible. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as this lot is undersized, 0.93 acres, and has roads on.
Four sides.
On four sides, I-84, Old Fishkill Hook Road, and Fishkill Hook Road, creating a circumstances where nearly any improvement to the rear yard would require a variance. The shed would comply with the R1 setback requirement but for the I, but for the I-84 buffer. The variance requested is not substantial as the size of the proposed deck is only 12 feet by 16 feet. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore be resolved as the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance. And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized members of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
All right, we're going to do one more and then we'll let John J. go. All right, item number 11, Appeal 3850 Dema Richard and Catherine Demas, 76 Christine Court Stormville, are requesting a 37-foot front line variance for a proposed above-ground pool, a 32-foot front line variance for pool utilities, a 48-foot front line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed, and a variance to allow an existing 21-foot by 18-foot playset to remain in front of the dwelling pursuant to Sections 194-95, 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good. So again, we had an opportunity last month to review your application. You have, not for nothing, but a strange lot where you have every, all your land is in the front of your house and the back of your house is practically up to the road.
Yes.
So your ability to use your back, your rear yard is very, very limited. To your benefit, though, you're on a street, you're the back, and plus you have a street on the front, a street on the side, and a street in the back.
Yes.
To your credit, though, the street that's in the back is, has two houses opposite you and then one house way down the road.
Almost a private driveway, yeah.
Exactly. It's really, for all intents and purposes, it's, there's practically nobody living on it. So, and so as much as this board truly has concerns about variances for pools, I really want to make it clear for the record that this is an extremely unique circumstance, that you really have a very limited ability to do much of anything at all in your backyard. In fact, if we put the pool in your backyard, you can't put the swing set in the backyard. And so, you know, just given the conditions of your lot, it really is unique in that it would be hard for somebody else in this town to match all of these conditions to be able to put in a similar request. That being said, we did talk about making sure there's the appropriate screening stays there. Were you going to put up a fence at all? I think we had.
No.
Okay. We had some conversation, but I think your interest was not putting one up there, so.
When you say screening, you mean the vegetation that's exist there?
The trees that are there.
Yeah, I'm not touching.
Exactly. That was what we talked about. So, any questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, one of the issues that came up last time, and I wasn't sure how you're going to address it because your shed is over your property line. It's actually almost, I mean, part of it is almost two feet onto the road, onto the property.
We moved it.
Oh, you moved it.
I have pictures if you want to see.
Okay, as long as it's moved, then that's fine.
The building department will confirm that, that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, they did move it in, that's why we're asking for the 48-foot.
Okay, no, just, yeah, just want to make.
Variance of the shed.
Okay, fine. So I'm good.
But again, even where you could move it to was very limited, so. Okay. Where are your utilities? Your, where's your septic?
The septic is in the front yard.
It's in the front yard, okay. So, creating, that's why you really have such a large front yard then, so.
Yes.
Okay. Anything? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Richard and Catherine Demas, 76 Christine Court Stormville, requesting a 37-foot front line variance for a proposed above-ground pool, a 32-foot front line variance for pool utilities, a 48-foot front line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed, and a variance to allow an existing 21-foot by 18-foot playset to remain in front of the dwelling?
Yes, my name is Mario Curzio from 63 Hidden Acres Road. I'm a neighbor of the Demas, approximately maybe 100 feet away. And we wouldn't have any objections to any of the variances that he's requesting.
Okay, great.
I think it would be an improvement to the property.
Thank you for coming out. If you don't mind, can I ask you to just sign in on the clipboard right there, just so we have your name for the record? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is Appeal Number 3850 for a 37-foot front line variance for a proposed above-ground pool, a 32-foot front line variance for pool utilities, a 48-foot front line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed, and a variance to allow an existing 21-foot by 18-foot playset to remain in the front of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-95 and 194-107B3 and of the zoning ordinance. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variances, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the rear property line is along Hidden Acres Road in a very sparse inhabited area, and the property is screened so the pool would be minimally visible to anyone along the road. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as this lot is surrounded by roads on three sides and the house is placed over 165 feet from the front property line, leaving a very small rear yard with limited opportunities for recreation. The variance requested is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. You're all set. Now you'll deal with the building department.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, we'll sign your certificate. You're still, of course, welcome to stay. Now, for those of you who are remaining, I'm assuming you're here for the reviews. We're going to take much more time with your reviews to make sure we truly understand what you're looking for so that you'll be able to have, again, smooth, bubble hearings, so.
Can I have a good time?
Are you Chinese?
Yes. Yeah, she'll be here one of these, she's not taking pig this semester, so, but she'll be, she'll be at one of these meetings, too. Don't worry. All right, so we are on reviews. Item number 12, Appeal 3826 Colley Dean. Colley is requesting a foot, 14-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing house, a one-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, a one-foot sideline variance for an existing 20-foot by 26-foot deck, a five-foot sideline variance for an existing five-foot by 26-foot deck, a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing nine-foot by nine-foot deck, a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing four-by-13-foot deck, four-foot by 13, and a, sorry, a seven-foot sideline variance for an existing 11-foot by 11-foot deck, a 29-foot variance, and a 17-foot sideline variance for an existing 15-foot by 20-foot garage, as well as a variance for an existing above-ground pools pursuant to Sections 194-95 and 194-107B2 of the zoning ordinance.
I mean, that was great.
And to think this is reduced from your original request.
Bringing miracles to the board.
Okay. So, since last we met, look, just for the, for the record here, Mr. Colley submitted an application months and months ago. We did an initial review of it. The variances at that time being requested were significantly worse. We directed you to please go to the, to the planning board to see about doing a lot line adjustment or realignment because he owned the adjacent parcels that were significantly larger in acreage. And so my understanding is you've done that, so bring this up to date.
Yep, we've been to, we've been to planning board. We moved the rear line back, I want to say probably about 70 feet. And we also brought the lot into area conformance. I think we were about 1.5 acres. A portion of this lot is in the R3 in the B-zone, so we increased the lot area to be in that area conformance as well.
Okay.
We've got them through the planning board process. We're in the process of dotting the i's, crossing the t's with the attorney and the applicant's attorney. We hope to file the map in the near future. So we're back in front of the board with our revised application, which I think we reduced the variances by maybe nine, plus or minus. I think we were at 17. So we tried to put a dent in them as best we could. Most of the, most of the variances that we were able to reduce were in the rear line. That's basically the only line we were able to adjust, even though we had common ownership on the side. We did want to get into a situation where we're making the lot next door to us less conforming than it is. So we had to maintain to the, to the, to the, to our side, we had to maintain a 75-foot lot width.
Right.
So we weren't able to adjust any of the side yard variances, just the rear yard variances.
Right. To your, to explain that a little bit better, on the map that you've given us of the area, there's kind of like a rectangular or polygon-shaped lot, but it has an arm to it that stretches over and connects it really to this lot, and then it goes to a much larger parcel behind both lots, but kind of at an angle there. And so your ability, we agreed with you upfront, we encouraged you to look at a significant, a specific line to set that variance for that would reduce the number of variances that you needed. So, we do recognize that, and I want to make it very clear, just people adding on Dexter their homes is, is not something that should be done, not just from a, you know, the means of, you know, you don't, structurally, who knows how safe all these decks are, but that's for the building department to deal with. And so, we're not making it easy for him to get this variance. We did, in fact, insist that he had to get surveys done and go to the planning board and, you know, do what he could to minimize the variances that were requested.
Yes, it's a very painful process and expensive process for the applicant.
And it's, you're now probably eight or nine months into this process at least, so.
And we're trying to sell the house and we've passed through two buyers. So yes, it's been a process.
Well, but again.
Get your permit.
It was self-created hardship, so. The only last issue that I'll tell you I still have an issue with is the fact that the pool is still there. And as, you know, we've, we've said before, and, you know, we do have issues about granting variances for pools unless there really is, in fact, very, very unique circumstances that there just is no other recreation opportunities on the lot available to the owners. You know, in fact, a few variances I can think of really that we did grant for pools, they had such weird lots that I'm not sure this kind of fits that criteria, in my mind at least. I'm one person, you only have three board members here tonight, but we're not making a decision, so I don't know if there's any.
Well, I'd like to get, I'd like to get the pulse of the board and see what the rest of the board members' feelings are, and then that way I can comment.
Sure, that's fine.
I don't have a problem with where the pool is. Because I don't, I don't see that there's many choices.
I mean, it doesn't have a backyard.
Yeah.
So.
We don't know what, how this lot's ever going to be developed. That's what worries me. But in this case, the pool is there first, so.
If we're not going to, if we're not going to make any headway on the pool, the owner will take the pool down.
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be to take the pool down if possible.
If they'll take it down.
We're at the point where it's just we want to move past this process.
How old the pool is it? How long has it been there?
It's, it's eight to 10 years.
So it's probably getting close to the end of its potentially useful life of this existing liner on it anyway. So, I, you know, again.
You don't need to.
If it's a hurdle for the board, we'll take it off.
Make it easy.
Yeah.
That's, we're at, that's the point we're at.
You've got so many variances that you need here that, to the extent that you can eliminate another one, okay?
Thank you.
All right, so that being said, we've, for other people here, we have had the opportunity to review this before. This is not the first time we're seeing this one. So, given the fact that the applicant did go to the planning board, did do the adjustments that we did request, at this point, I'm ready to move it forward for a public hearing, so. Motion advertise?
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I need to make a quick amendment to the plan to have that, that variance request off for the pool, or can I submit as a, keep it as is?
You should just amend the actual application. That's with Pam.
Okay.
Okay, you can just send a, send her a letter.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Pam, we'll give you your sign instructions, or you have them already, you know.
We'll be there.
Okay, item number 13, Appeal 3851 Lopez. Jason Lopez, 17 Galatly Drive, Wapinders Falls, is requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment and a six-foot sideline variance for an existing pool deck pursuant to Section 195-94 and 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So I understand you put a pool in the side yard, which is allowed, but that you're, am I wrong?
It's, it's more backyard than side yard. I'm, I'm one of those lots that's, I heard you speaking about it earlier, my front yard is 100 yards long.
Okay.
And I don't have too much backyard space.
Okay. And so.
And looking at the, on the paper here, if I'm not mistaken, the deck is okay. I thought that we had 15 feet, and I'm at 18 feet on, over 18 feet on all the deck. I thought that the variance was for the pool filter and the pool heater. If I'm not mistaken, I may be mistaken.
So Pam, where is the existing deck? Do we have a survey?
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Okay, sorry, let's pull this out.
Check on them.
I have glasses here somewhere.
Wood deck. So it's more 32 feet.
So the pool deck is 18.9 feet away. It's a, it's a raised deck?
It's a raised deck, yes, correct.
So it's supposed to be 25 feet, right?
Deck is 77.7 feet. Or is that the pool deck?
That's the pool equipment. The 17.7 is the pool.
No, if you go, it says deck, 77.7.
That's from the back.
That's from the rear.
But from the side yard?
Oh.
It says 18.9.
That's the pool deck, isn't it? Is there a deck around the pool?
There is a deck around the pool, yes.
Doesn't it have to be?
Yeah, I thought it was 15 feet for the pool deck and the pool and the equipment. It was 25 feet?
No, it's 15 foot, 15 feet for a patio, not for a deck. That's why I'm asking, is it raised?
Yes, it's raised.
Okay, a deck is 25 feet.
Oh, okay, then we, okay, so then we misread the.
Okay, no, a patio. If you have an in-ground pool and you have a patio around the pool, that's what requires only the 15 feet.
Okay, so, okay, so then, yes, we do need the six-foot variance for the deck as well. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Misunderstood it.
Is your lot, are you on the side that goes down or on the side that goes up? If you're heading down Galatly Drive, you're on the right or on the left?
If I'm, if I'm going down Galatly Drive, I'm driving towards the cul-de-sac.
Right. Are you?
I'm on the left-hand side of the street.
Okay.
If you're going towards the cul-de-sac, the left-hand side of the street is the one that has all the 100-foot driveways.
Okay.
The right-hand side is with the front yards as well as backyards.
Okay.
Of, almost a normal size.
But what's the slope of your, I don't think you have a flat lot.
No, it's not a flat lot. It's, yeah, no, I'm up, the front, the front yard is up, is definitely an incline.
Okay.
And then I have.
Because the other side is where they will go down in the backyard.
Yes, correct. And I have a, it's a two-level backyard. The lower level is where the pool is. The second level is mostly trees and unlevel, uneven ground.
Okay. So tell us about this shed that's back there.
The shed was there when we bought the house. We weren't aware that it wasn't conforming. It was a point of contention with the purchase. We never put it in our contract.
Okay.
That it was supposed to be removed. We had a verbal, and then at the closing, the previous owner was ready to walk, and we said, okay, you know what, we'll deal with it at a later date. We didn't even realize that it was not a, in compliance, correct. And then when we submitted the, the survey after everything was done, we were told that. And it, we, honestly, we planned on replacing it. So there will most likely be a variance request in the future for that because it is in, in the best shape. There's a hole in the roof already. We don't have anything up there. I'm.
Okay, so it's not in your request now?
It's not in the request now because I have the intention of getting rid of it.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's, yeah, that's coming down. I was just waiting for the weather to cool down before I went up there and started pulling it all down.
Okay.
That's dilapidated, it's on its way, that's on the way out.
Are you looking to replace it? Since you're moving it anyway, since you're taking it down, do you have the opportunity to move it more in compliance with what the setback requirements are?
It would, there's not much room in that yard up there. There's a big tree, there's a big oak tree in the backyard back there.
Essentially four feet from the backyard. You'd have to move it in 11 feet?
11 feet, 15.
Could you move it in?
Most, like, again, I don't even know what, we haven't even really concerned ourselves with that. I have, at this point, it has every intention of that coming down.
Okay. Okay.
And we're gonna, we want to broach that down the road.
Okay, so we're not even gonna deal that?
Yeah, this, the shed is a minimal thing right now, like I said, I'm just waiting for the weather to cool down.
So we're gonna make a condition, if this moves forward, that...
Yes, absolutely, if this moves forward, that will be coming down as soon as it needs to come down.
Yeah, because the thing is, if you plan to put a shed in the future, you can amend your application at this point and get it, you know, approved with this, with these variances.
But the town code has changed, and so now you only need the 15 feet in, so...
Right, okay.
Should make it significantly easier for you to actually put a shed in.
Right, you know, there's a big, there's a big concrete slab back there now and everything too that I'm gonna have to deal with, it's...
Yeah, let's...
As long as you're...
Right, yeah, no, I'm, like I said, I came mostly with the intention of the pool, the shed was, I had no idea about the shed until I turned the survey in, I didn't realize that it was non-conforming.
Okay.
So the shed will be down...
Removed.
Shed's gone, yeah.
In the next 30 days or thereabouts?
Absolutely, I'll make sure the shed is gone within the next 30 days.
Okay.
Okay.
And the thing with the pool, in the middle of my yard, there is another, right in the middle of that lower yard, there's another big tree. We originally had planned on moving the pool over, but the roots from that, when they went, when they said they were gonna dig, because it goes down, five and a half feet the pool, when they went to dig, they were like, we can't dig that, because then you're gonna lose that tree completely.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a nice shaded tree.
So talk about the pool equipment itself, how close is it to your neighbor's house? Is it visible to them?
Uh, there are, sorry, there are trees, there are, when we were installing the pool, one bush came out that will be replaced next spring, we didn't want to do it now, because we worried about it not making it through the winter. I do have letters from my two neighbors saying that they don't have a problem, if you'd like me to give them to you, was that for a later date?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put them in the record and then read them at the public hearing.
Okay.
So that would be great, thank you.
Both neighbors on either side of me.
So 19 Galatley and 15, okay, so we'll leave them into the record for the public hearing, just remind me that they're there.
And originally, the plan was for all the equipment to go underneath the deck.
Okay.
Turned out that the heater was a little bigger than we expected it to be.
Okay.
And they said that it had to go outside, because it wouldn't, it needed to breathe.
Need air, yeah.
Yes, correct, we, we installed an electric heater.
Okay.
And it, when we realized that it was not gonna be in the right place, where we would have had to put it, puts it in play with, I have nine-year-old twin daughters, had we put it on the other side of the deck, it's in play, the steps to the, like, if this were the pool, this side, it's on this side, which is away from the steps.
Right.
Over here, it would have been in play with the entire yard, on this side, it would have been in play with where people enter up onto the steps.
Okay.
To get up onto the deck.
Okay. Where is your septic and well?
Septic is in the front of the house.
Okay.
The well...
That's one of the reasons your lot, your house is set so far back.
Exactly, right. Uh, the septic is in the front, and the well is to the back right, a good 80, I don't know the exact number, but let's call it 50-plus feet from where the pool is.
Yep, okay. All right, comments or questions from board members?
You have a metal fence, how tall is the fence?
Uh, the fence is actually attached to the pool deck, it's, it's an aluminum, it's an aluminum pool with an aluminum deck all around it, and the fence, figure, when I'm standing on the side of the pool, the fence is probably, I'm six feet tall, so probably seven to eight feet to the top there.
Uh-oh.
Well, the fence itself, it's attached to the pool, correct, the deck is probably waist height.
Okay, that's fine.
The deck is waist height, the fence would be another three to four feet.
It's part of the pool, so we don't need a variance for that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any else, okay, David?
Yeah, I motion to advertise.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so Pam's gonna give you your instructions for your sign, you'll have to put a sign on the front of the street there.
Okay.
And then we'll see you next month for your public hearing.
Okay, sounds good, do I see Pam now, do I come see Pam tomorrow?
You, you're fired right now.
This one instructions.
That's the instructions.
Okay, sounds good, thank you so much.
Okay, up, item number 14, Appeal 3852 Milano, Janice Milano, 104 Lake Walton Road, Hopple Junction, is requesting a 16-foot front line variance for proposed deck stairs, a four-foot front line variance for a proposed eight-foot five, 12-foot porch, and a four-foot front line variance for a proposed addition, and a three-foot sideline variance for the pre-existing house pursuant to Sections 194-94, 194-17, and 194-127 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so you're the house that's the second one in past Sunset, right, or past Brown Road but before Sunset, that's what it is.
And Brown Road, their backyard is on my backyard, right.
Okay, and the one on the, one on the corner there with Brown Road is the one that has that white picket fence that's...
Yes, and it's theirs, not mine.
Um, we're gonna take a look at your, the survey, and you may want, well, tell me, who, the nice, the good part of the fence faces who?
Um, the person, when I bought the house, they put it, it was facing me.
Okay, so it is their fence, okay.
Yeah, no, no, the bad part is facing me, but they put it up.
Then it's your fence.
Not the people who own it now, but like, maybe three or four owners before that.
Then it might be your fence.
No, it's their fence, I didn't put it up. But I'm gonna, after everything's done, hoping that you approve the addition, then I'm gonna come in to put my own fence up on appropriate lines.
Because in looking at your application, the one thing that really concerns me is the way the fence is in the back, you are, you're letting somebody else use your property and you're potentially...
In the backyard?
Yeah.
Oh, well, they just bought the house with the fence, it's their fence.
You're gonna want them to move that fence off of your, if that fence in the backyard is not yours, both sides...
None, none of them are, actually, none of the fences are mine.
Both corners, in essence, they can claim rights to your property if you allow them to continue the use of that property, if you want to come up and see what you've given us here.
I have a copy too.
Okay.
I had them give me an extra copy.
Take a look at the rear of your lot, and you'll see the two fences, it cuts into the corner.
The one on the diagonal, I put up, that's inside my property line, but back on here, oh, that's right on my property line? So that means all those bushes that they planted and keep telling me that I have to take care of because they're theirs, those are my plants?
I don't know where the plants are.
Inside the property line, the people in the back put...
We're talking about the two rear corners.
Two rear corners, set a triangular, you're out of possession.
Why don't you come here and show what you're looking at, so...
Sure.
Okay.
The way you've, is there some reason why you put the fence out of corner here?
Because when I put it up 14 years ago, I didn't have any money to do anything else.
Okay, because in essence, you're...
All the other fences, this was here, this was here, and this was here when I bought the house.
Okay.
So I put that up to keep my dogs in.
Because in essence, you're allowing your neighbors the use of this property.
Oh, yeah, nobody's using it. When I, when I, after everything goes through, I'm going to go in however you're supposed to and put a fence up where it's supposed to be.
To the corner, sorry, to the corner.
Yeah.
Okay, but this fence, so is this fence back here yours?
No, nothing's mine, just this piece, and then the ones on the two sides of my yard, that's it.
So this fence is not yours?
Let me think, no.
Here's your front street.
No, um, no.
Then again, you're gonna want them to move that fence, because they can claim that property.
The people who just bought the house back here?
Yeah.
They said that they want to take down the fence anyway.
Okay.
So I'm hoping they wait till spring, and then I can go and put up my own fences.
When you had, how, how long, when did you buy the property?
2002.
And your attorney did not point these out to you?
I didn't even, this is, this is a survey, my first survey, I just had it done.
When you bought the house, you didn't have to get a survey from the bank?
We didn't have to, no.
Wow.
You don't have to, you got endorsement from the title company.
Okay, yeah.
So I would, I would actually contact the title company and tell them there's a problem, because they're supposed to give you a good title, and you don't have a good title right now.
So I didn't even know these were on my property until I...
That's the benefit of getting a survey, yes.
Yeah, because your neighbors own your property.
Wow.
Well, I mean, they could claim it.
They could claim it at some point.
Have to do something about that, thank you.
That's why we're pointing it out to you, that's all.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so for, so what you're really asking for is, you have a kind of funny shaped home with the entrance way there, and so you're looking to a kind of a...
Yeah, you saw the cute little picture of it. I have the smallest, second to smallest house on Lake Walton Road, I have like 920 square feet.
That only ensures the bank.
That is a kitchen, that little box is a kitchen, so I'm gonna bring, yeah.
Really? The one at the back of the box in the house or the one on the side?
The little, the little one over here, that's my kitchen.
Wow, so you walk right into your kitchen?
Yeah.
Okay, wow.
So what I'm hoping to do is to bring that out, that's why I want to take down, my porch is falling apart, we'll take it out, and then we'll bring the kitchen forward, so I have a little bit more room, and it actually can have kind of an entrance way, so that you don't walk into kitchen.
Yeah.
You know, I want to put a little wall in there.
I mean, to your credit, because the neighbor's house is so close to the road and with their fence and everything, frankly, your eyes are drawn to their property and you don't even notice your property, so...
Oh, God, I know.
So...
You will, after it's done, it's gonna look real pretty.
So, you know, to your credit, it, the, the impact of this is gonna be minimal, because your eyes are just drawn to...
Yes.
...the use on that neighboring property there, so, so, you know, I didn't necessarily have any objection to it, I was just more concerned about the fences and your property rights there than...
Now I'm concerned, thank you.
Just, that's the benefit of getting a survey, so, so comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Are you gonna change the whole exterior of the site, or are you gonna match the addition with what's there?
The addition's gonna come out, but we're gonna do something nice with the roofs, so it has a look to it instead of just going straight across.
Just one story or two stories?
One story.
Only one story, okay.
Yeah, there is a basement, but it's a basement.
It's fine, okay.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things is that because you had the survey done, the surveyor actually located several iron rods that define your property.
Right.
So that in case there's an issue with your neighbor, you can actually show them the survey and show them where their iron rods are, which really will help you define your own property.
So at such time as they do take down the fence, you're gonna want to make sure that you share your survey with them, so that they, when they put the new fence up, they are not encroaching on your property.
Right, well, I'm gonna be the one putting it up.
Oh, okay.
The ones on Brown Road, they want to do it with me, and I know we're gonna have to go in for something for that, because we want to put kind of a privacy.
Okay.
Right where their back deck is looking at my pool, kind of, I mean, I love them, they're nice people, but, you know, we kind of both want a little bit of privacy, so, but I'm gonna do that after the addition, I just wanted to get this done and then move forward.
Okay, good.
You all right?
I'm good.
Motion to advertise?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so Pam will give you your instructions for your sign.
Okay.
And then we'll see you next month.
Thank you for pointing out that about the fence lines, I know Pam had mentioned the fences, but I thought it was because they were there.
No, 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 it was, we actually were concerned for your sake.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a nice evening. You too. All right, item number 15, Appeal 3853 Capola, Grand Capola, 2304 Route 52, Hopple Junction, is requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot chain link fence to be installed as a pool enclosure in his rear yard pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Frank Riley, I'm a project manager for LJ Capola, and I'm building the owner's house on a piece of property which starts on the corner of Schluter Drive and Route 52.
Oh, opposite to the lemon tree there, the daycare center, okay.
The, the property is 99.6 acres, and there's a 7,000-square-foot house built roughly in the center of the usable portion of the property.
The low portion or the higher up in the back?
Higher.
Higher up, okay.
Higher up. And the house also has a swimming pool, did, did you get, all get the drawings that I sent?
Yeah.
I should have put this on a board, but...
Well, there's no neighbors here today, so for the, for next month, more important.
Well, the house is not visible from Schluter Drive or from Route 52, the main driveway is 2,000 feet long, and it comes up off of Route 52, you've probably seen that freshly paved driveway across from the cinnamon tree.
I can't say that I've looked that direction.
Okay. The setbacks from the property lines, from the front of the house, the setback is 300 feet to the property line, from the west side of the house, it's over 800 feet to the property line, the east side wing, it's greater than 2,000 feet to the property line in the back, and from the back of the house to the property line is roughly 400 feet. The fence that we're proposing is, it's supposed to come off of the west wing of the house, perpendicular to the house for the first 31 feet, or 30 feet, and it'll be a 54-inch high wood fence. The reason why we're doing this is three different reasons, number one, we have to satisfy the code for a fence around a swimming pool.
Right.
Number two, he's got his most expensive plantings in the back of the house, and he wants to keep deer out of there.
Okay.
Number three, there's, the construction entrance, which we've been using, is an old Eastment off of Schluter Drive, and this property has been undeveloped and unused since the Schluter family farm was there.
Right.
So there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that has...
Oh, people got used to taking a walk on it.
Getting used to walking through this, so hopefully with the fence, it will take care of all three conditions.
Okay, but explain why you need a black chain link fence.
Well...
It's not exactly decorative, so...
No, it's not decorative, but if you look at the drawing, the, it's not visible from anyone's property, the surrounding, the area outside the area of disturbance is all heavily wooded, and putting up a decorative fence that, in, in the tree line where he wants to do this, would probably bring more attention to the fence than a black chain link fence where past 50 yards, you can't even see it.
And how tall a fence are you asking for?
Well, we, we were initially asking for six, but if we, if we can get an eight, that's fine, if not, a six-foot fence would be fine.
Yeah, I know.
Is it there?
And you're requesting that height because of the deer?
The deer and to keep teenagers from climbing over it. Deer, and to keep teenagers from climbing over it.
Is it going to be the smaller mesh?
Yeah, the small mesh required for the swimming pool, yes.
I'd be concerned about setting a precedent about a chain link fence.
A ninety-nine acre parcel.
Well, that's, that's the one thing in its favor, you know?
Plays heavily to...
Is the fact that it is a heav, very heavily wooded, I mean...
Well, put it this way, if...
We were on the planning board when we did a site visit up here once.
If you, if you happen to get to the chain link fence on that property, you are severely trespassing onto this man's property, so it's not something that's visible from anyone else's property or from any road.
What you're proposing to put it is at least three hundred feet to the property line, so really, nobody would see it, that's in its favor. The entrance into where the chain link fence is, I guess it's coming from the front?
From the, from the rear side corner of the house.
Is that gonna be this other picture that we have?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be similar to this picture of this wood fence, only it'll be, it's not gonna be painted, it'll be stained in natural wood color.
So where is, where exactly are you proposing that the chain link fence is gonna start?
The chain link fence is gonna start up in the tree line, if you, if you come off the side of the house, there's thirty to fifty feet of open space, then the berm, the elevation starts to rise there, the tree line is right there.
So you're proposing it's gonna start really there in front of the, so you're in front of the, front of the house, too?
Well, it's on the back corner of the house, and if you were standing in front of the house, you may see it.
Is that the front corner of a house? If a house is...
Oh, you see where the...
E-shaped, and it's, okay, so the front entrance is here with a circular drive, and he's over here, but before the end of the V, is that the front of the house, in front of the, front of the house? I think it is. It's at, at a minimum, it's in the side yard, which is, so it's more than just the fact that he's looking for an eight-foot fence, it's an eight-foot fence in a front yard.
It is a front yard, because Route 52 is right there.
So again, let's just make sure we get the variance right, so that nobody challenges it at some point down the road.
But also keep in mind, I don't know if anybody other than Ray has been up to the property, if you're on Route 52, you cannot see this house.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay.
But the fence starts in the front yard.
It runs in the front yard.
Side yard.
Front yard.
Well, again, it faces Route 52 first.
And it's in the front of the, front line of the house, that front line...
Is parallel to the front, to 52.
Yeah, so it's, it is in the front line, so we just have to make sure we include that in the variance. Okay? Pam, you're gonna change the wording of the notice? That aside, I'm okay to advertise it. You all right?
Yeah, motion to advertise.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will see you next month.
Okay. Do we have to put up one of those signs?
Should do.
Where does it go?
Do they have to put up two, one on Schluter Drive as well?
Well, but their entrance is gonna be from 52, it's constructed, so that's really...
But it's a property line, so is it...
How about at the construction entrance on Schluter and 52?
Two.
All right, yeah, I think the neighbors on Schluter should be entitled to see that. Okay.
Two rather than one every fifty feet of frontage.
What? No. All right, so last, item number sixteen, Appeal 3854, Espida? Espizia, thank you. Ten Cliff Court Homes is requesting an expansion of a non-conforming structure in order to build a six-foot addition and stairs onto the existing deck, a seventy-five-foot sideline variance for the existing house, and a seventeen-foot sideline variance for the existing shed pursuant to Note 11 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. The property is subject to the I-84 buffer requirements, and a variance was granted for the house to be built on the lot. So, okay, Pam, I don't have this application. So, yeah, we're gonna just share with what's here, okay? But, yeah, just so we're, okay, so if you don't mind, this is the first, we're seeing